Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 26, 2025 East Lansing Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Bartley, would you please do roll?
Commissioner Chapin?
Here.
Commissioner Denault?
Here.
Commissioner Hendricks? Commissioner Lapine? Commissioner Overby?
Here.
Commissioner Putz?
Here.
Commissioner Sawalowski? Vice Chair Wagner?
Here.
Chair Sullivan?
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Denault, seconded by Vice Chair Wagner. Seeing no discussion, all is in favor, vote aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the January 22nd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Overby?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Chapin. Seeing no discussion, all is in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, takes us on to item number two, committee reports. So I know there's a handful of committees, they're not itemized on the agenda, but the Age Friendly Committee, Community Development Block Grant, Master Plan and Green Code. I don't know, who wants to go first? I'm happy to chime in as needed. How about we do the Community Block Grant update first?
So I worked with the CDBG in January and February, and right after, I think, our last meeting here, we had our final meeting where we did all the juicy work of doing out the money to different groups. We had about $480,000. Well, that was our 2024 budget, and we're doing our 2025 budget based on the money for 2024. We don't exactly know how much we'll have, but that's a rough estimate. We had three different pots of money to give out. One was for sort of the administrative work that the city does for this. It's kind of a complicated grant through HUD, and there's a lot of specific requirements. So we gave the city their chunk of money for admin. There's infrastructure work. We gave money to the city for sidewalks, and we gave money to the city for the northern tier, trail tier extension that's going on. So they had some other funding that goes with that. So the third area, the sort of, and there were 10 applicants, and one withdrew, and we gave everyone some portion of money. But most of the money was, most of the competition was for public services, and this was like Haven House, MSU Safe Place, the Tri-County Commission on Aging for Meals on Wheels. And of course, we want to give money to everyone, right? But we had to, you know, they asked, we had to narrow down the, whittle down the budget, and we did it. The committee consisted of one member from each commission, and there was never a unanimous vote. So, you know, someone from the Parks Commission is like, "We want all the money to go to the parks," and someone else is like, "We want all the good money to go to the, you know, to Meals on Wheels." And so it was good. We had debates, and some people were a little uncomfortable at first, but like, "I don't agree with you." Like, "We can vote on this, majority rules," and, you know, I was in the minority two or three times, and, you know, everyone is in the minority probably at least once or twice. So it was, it was a nice discussion and a good experience. So our recommendations go to council, and I think probably in two or three weeks, they will hear, or maybe only, I don't know, they will look at our recommendations. And last year, they approved it as is, pending funding from HUD, so that's it.
Couple of questions.
Commissioner Overby?
Sure.
So, Ed, is there a list somewhere of the, of the funding recommendations that are going to go to council?
Yes. So this whole, this whole meeting was transparent, and all the information is online. I could, I'm not exactly sure, it's on the city's website somewhere. If you Google, you know, community development block grants, so it'll list how mu, what we propose. It's a little bit awkward sometimes when the applicants are sitting in the room, and it's, you know, it's all public, right? So I could sit here and say, "Well, I don't think, you know, this person who's asking for money to house migrant students and to give them dental work, like, I don't think they should get the money," like, you know, like, whatever. But it is all on the website.
And the decisions were a majority of the, of the members supporting that particular proposal?
Yes, we had nine, we had nine members, and for each, we took out a big spreadsheet, and then we went through and said, "Okay, if we gave everyone everything we wanted, it'd be $675,000." You know, somehow, we have to whittle down 250,000, whatever it was, like, you know, a third of the, of the overall ask. And we just had discussions about it and say, "Let's start with this, and then move on to the next thing." And no one was ever happy. Like, no, there was not, well, I mean, maybe, maybe Meals on Wheels, I think we probably gave them everything they asked for, but like, most of it was a little bit contentious at times, so.
And is there any indication that all the goings-on in Washington, DC will affect this block grant and the money coming to the city?
Chuck, don't ask that question.
I think I just did.
I, I, I think probably, but I hope not. I mean, you know, this is, I don't know.
We don't have any official or unofficial notification that this is, this is the case?
Usually, we, we get notification in late April about how much money the city's going to get from, from HUD. It's for low to moderate income citizens.
Yes.
And every year, like, you know, it's, it's been pretty predictable and steadily decreasing over time. So probably 10 years ago, we maybe had twice as much money.
I know.
But, yeah, I don't, I don't have any more than that.
Good question, though. Curious myself.
Great question.
Sounds like a lot of other deliberative bodies could take some advice from your group. Coming to a consensus on that, seems like it was complicated, but good work that you did there.
What is worth, we'd be happy to email up item from CDBG committee or advisor committee that went to the city council, so we can send that to the planning commission later this week.
Thank you. I don't recall where I saw it, but it is on, online somewhere. I think it was maybe on your group's agenda, but. Commissioner Chapin, do you have an update on the age friendly?
A little bit of a brief report. We had a short meeting last Thursday, February 20th. We're working on, we have a homework assignment to work on, some material prior to our next meeting to grind on our, to work through, bad word, to work through our, our senior survey and what action steps we might follow up in. Landon, you had a nice opportunity to represent age friendly. You want, I think it would be appropriate for you to discuss your experience at a national level.
Yeah, the ARP will have an age-friendly conference. It's a national conference, virtual, that will be on March 19th and 20th, and we submitted a proposal for the members of the committee to be part of a panel, and they said, "Yes, we'd like to have one of you." So the committee selected me to represent our age-friendly committee at that conference. That'll be on the 20th of March at 1:00 PM, which is the same day as our next age-friendly committee's meeting.
All right.
And I'd also mention that the, the committee has been doing sort of deep dives on each of the age-friendly, sort of, eight, there are eight domains of the age-friendly framework, and we'll start, we've, we've been looking at those different domains and determining which action steps from the 2020 work plan to, if they need to be updated or, or changed or removed or something added, and that's the homework that Commissioner Chapin was referring to. And we'll be completing those deep dives at the next meeting on March 20th. And I expect to bring, bring the work plan, I guess, for adoption shortly thereafter, as we make, make those updates. There's also, I should mention, the Age Alive Forum. The MSU Age Alive program is running, which will be on April 3rd at MSU FCU on Farm Lane on Michigan State, State's campus, and that's about town-gone relations. We'll also have representation, I guess, me, again, I'll be on a panel at that conference, and we'll also have a resource table about the age-friendly work plan and the work we're doing. You got it.
Landon, want to give an update on the comprehensive master plan that we met, I think, last month, right?
Love to. Yeah, the comprehensive plan update, coordinating, coordinating committee met last month and sort of did the last, I would say, look at the implementation steps, the sort of preliminary implementation matrix of what steps for which focus area do we think make a lot of sense for the short term, like, even within the first 90 days after adoption, very short term, short term, medium term, long term, and sort of filled out that implementation matrix. We received an initial draft from the consultant team last week. Staff is reviewing that right now, and we're going to send our comments back by the end of this week. I expect to send another draft, the next draft, with our staff comments incorporated, to the comprehensive plan committee probably a week or so after that, and hopefully have a meeting of that committee in late March, where we'll sort of bring it back together and say, "Okay, now we have, you've had a couple of weeks to review this. What are your comments? What are your concerns?" Once the committee has made their comments, we'll send them back to the consultants and then bring it back to the planning commission for your review in a public hearing. At that point, the plant, planning commission will make a recommendation, will, will send, send the plan to council, the draft plan document to council to receive and distribute to, for review to the public, to neighboring municipalities, and to various stakeholders, railroads and such, for a required 42-day review period, which is required by state-enabling legislation, 42 days for, for plan updates. So we expect that will be sort of through the months of May and June. We had a community open house event last fall, we called Every Plan Everywhere All at Once. We'll have a similar event probably in late May that will include the comprehensive plan update, and that will be during the review period. I expect at this point, the way timing is working and the way we're going, that will probably bring it to planning commission and council, if they so choose, and I believe they will, for approval in July. So I think that's my update for comprehensive plan update.
Yeah, Commissioner Overby?
Just a comment. Landon, I, I want to thank you for the hard work, you and your staff and the consultants on helping, helping. When we started this project, I felt like I was wrestling with an amoeba, and I couldn't make sense out of it. And as we've moved along, you and your staff and the consultants have helped us make sense out of it, and we've arrived at a product after the last meeting that I felt was, was concise and clear and, 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 and met the task that we were asked to do. So congratulations, thank you.
Commissioner, I appreciate that. I just hope that we can live up to that expectation when we get, bring the document to the planning commission. So, thank you. Mr. Chair, do you want me to just go in and talk about Green Code Study Committee, or do you have something you want to say?
No, I appreciate the, the comments that you made there, so I echo those, those same sentiments. It was a very thorough process with a lot of public engagement, and I think that the product, I'm, I'm really looking forward to see, kind of the, the final product. I think at the last meeting, we have a sense of what that's going to look like, but it's, it's going to be an interesting thing, and I'm, I'm sure that project was a lot more work than a lot of people thought it was going to be going into it. So, again, appreciate all you did there. But yeah, I think it's now appropriate now to transition to a conversation about the, the Green Code Committee, which met last night, so.
Oh, sorry. I have a question for Landon. Oh, excuse me so much. I know one of the, is, in, a lot of the discussions in the comp plan update meetings have been about meeting community members where they are. And so I wonder, and maybe we just haven't gotten to this point where we're planning such in-depth details about outreach, but I wonder if there is ideas, plans to engage in some kind of outreach to various neighborhood associations, right, to take the plan to them and to ask for their feedback, right, at their association meetings, or rather than having a single event just here, right? Any interest or any plans of that nature?
To an extent. You know, I found myself shaking my fist and saying, "It's just an update," several times, and, and one thing that's been very heartening is that there's been so much interest in the community and so much desire in, in saying, "We need, we, we want this, and we want a new comprehensive plan," and a big process, and more and more and more, which is wonderful, because I think there should be more planning. I don't, I don't necessarily see scheduling many meetings with planning staff going to the neighborhood association. I, I do see us distributing that directly to the neighborhood association and saying, "Share this. Share this widely. Have a meeting about this. If you really need us to be there, we'll be there, but just talk about it amongst yourselves. Send comments." Send comments. I, I, I think that there are a lot of other sort of methods or strategies that we can use to try to increase engagement. I'm not, I'm not certain that at this point we'll need to, but I, I do agree that we certainly want to distribute it widely and make sure that people understand, this is your time to review this and comment. Come to this community meeting, come to the public hearings that we'll have. And there will certainly be opportunities for, I think, official comment.
When are the public meetings?
I'm sorry?
When are the public meetings?
Not scheduled yet. It'll be a public hearing at the planning commission level. The council will see it. There will be a 42-day review period. We'll have a, a major public meeting at that, during that window, distributed to other groups, sort of targeted distribution, I think, but also get some news, news articles, get it on social media, have it on the, on the website, et cetera. And then we'll have public hearings again during the adoption process, which will likely be in July.
Thank you.
Anything else about the?
Sorry, I missed your question. Any other questions before we move on to the next?
So, thank you.
No, 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 I was going to refer to you for the Green Code Report, your, or the Green, Green Committee Report.
Would you like to give the Green Code?
Not, I don't mean Green Code, Green Committee.
Oh, sure. So we had a, and I'll probably hand it off to Landon as well, but we had last night another meeting of the Green Code Committee. Cliff Walls brought in a couple of really wonderful consultants whose names are escaping me. If I had my notes here, I would be able to share their names, but I'm someone from the state and Dan Christian, who I did remember his name. And we talked a lot about stormwater and flooding concerns that the neighborhood, the neighborhoods have experienced and sort of outreach and education about continued flooding efforts, or efforts to mitigate flooding here in the city, as well as steps that we might take in various policy capacities. And, yeah, it was a really wonderful conversation, I thought, about new development and how we might use this committee as well as other committees and various new policies to help mitigate flooding, which has been a real problem. I don't know, did I cover everything?
Yeah.
Anything?
I think that's well said. Do you have any additional?
Yeah, you mentioned Dan Christian. The other one was Kristi Alwyn from Eagle. You're, you're correct, the, the committee has been focusing heavily on stormwater. I think at this point, we're, at the next meeting in two weeks, we'll probably start to make some decisions among the committee on what, what action steps, what interventions are we going to propose or recommend to council. After that, we'll start to craft the ordinance language if, as, as needed, bring that back to the committee to sort of do a final check and then send it off to council for review and adoption, which I expect to probably be through April and May. And then the committee will come back together to start moving on to different focus areas that don't include stormwater. So, things that we've talked about with this body several times, different, different Green Code, Green Code sections that sort of were the impetus for the committee, so.
One thing that I didn't mention, that I thought was really interesting, Cliff proposed an audit of the current code for areas that we could potentially add language or policies that are more environmentally friendly or that help mitigate flooding. And I thought that that was a really wonderful suggestion by him that really, I think, coincided with other, with, I think, council member Altman said, the decennial code review anyway. So it was, I, I'm really excited to, I think, see what staff brings after that audit.
I don't think I have anything else.
Okay. No additional updates there? Any additional questions before we move on to the questions? All right, takes us on to item number three, staff reports.
The only thing I'd add to what I've already said is that, welcome to our new commissioner, Ryan Putz, who was appointed by council on January 7th, I believe, as was another commissioner, Scott Salweski, who is unfortunately unable, unable to join us tonight, but will be at either the next meeting or the following, will be joining us soon. And then lastly, just a shout out to our associate planner, Grace Whitney. We've seen her a couple of times. She's celebrating her one-year anniversary of joining the city today. So we're, she's been a, a huge addition to the, the very small team that we have. I'll just tell you that the several months that I was alone in that department before hiring Grace were really pretty hairy, so she really came in and saved the day and as did our, the rest of our staff that came along too later. But I, I remember a distinct sense of relief about a year ago today going, oh, this is going to be okay. So thanks to, thanks to Grace, and I just wanted to point that out. That's all I have for my staff report.
Great, thank you. Takes us on to item number four, commissioner announcements. This was the time I was going to turn it over to our new commissioner and see if he'd like to make an introduction.
Sure. So I'm Ryan Putz, a recent transplant to East Lansing. My spouse and I moved here from Georgia after she was hired at MSU. She's working in, let's see if I can remember all the college letters. College of Letters, oh, it is the College of Letters, actually. So she's working there and I applied for this, this, you know, commissioner seat mainly as a way to be more involved locally. And we've really just fallen in love with East Lansing after moving here. So felt like it was a good way to serve and connect with the community.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Love to clap at the next meeting, too, make sure we're consistent for the other new commissioner. Any other commissioner announcements? All right, seeing none. I do want to note on the agendas, item 4.1, disclosure of conflicts of interest. This is your, your time to make any announcements there for the agenda items. Seeing none, takes us on to item number five, communications from citizens. First is written communications. So I did see some written communications in the agenda packet for item 6.1, the only public hearing that's up tonight. Additionally, we were all handed a letter here that's before us that is new and was not in the agenda packet, so I will read that when I get an opportunity. And then that takes us on to item number 5.2, verbal from the audience. So this is your time to come forward and address the planning commission on anything on the agenda or off the agenda. I will say typically, if it's for a public hearing, like item 6.1, generally it's better to do that after staff gives their introduction of that item during the public hearing portion. And if you do come up, please identify yourself on a card up there if you haven't done so yet. I do have a couple of cards up here. So with that being said.
Landon, you had your hand up. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to mention about written communication.
Okay.
That was received, had been added to your packet, but it was, they'd add, there was a little bit of a mix up. And I'll discuss that in more detail at item 6.1.
Okay, great.
Hi, I'm going to, it, this is a little bit pertinent to 6.1, but I'm going to speak now if it's all right and then go home for dinner. My name's Liz Harrow. I'm, I live on, at 1147 Daisy Lane. I chaired the school carnival and maybe the PTA when Dave Chaitman was principal at Red Cedar School 100 years ago. My kids are in their 40s now. And I was on the planning commission for nine years, so I, I, I'm really glad I'm not there now, that I, you know, that, you know, that I'm, that you're the ones that call me home at midnight and not me. But, and also I'm going to throw in one more thing. I'm on Capital Area Housing Partnership Board and, and we, the four, we have at-large members and we have some CDBG members from Lansing and we have some CDBG members from East Lansing. We were just discussing this a couple nights ago at our, at our meeting. Monday afternoon, we were just discussing this. And, and it used to be really easy. We had four neighborhoods that we just named as the CDBG neighborhoods in East Lansing. And Bailey used to be just 100, you know, just a CDBG neighborhood. And now more and more of it is not, is, you know, is too rich to qualify. And so I, I think it's an interesting, an interesting topic. And one of the things that we are doing to name our members is going to neighborhood associations and we discuss that at our meeting because the neighborhood associations are actually much weaker and some of them I consider dysfunctional and, you know, and, and don't like, and some of them just don't meet very much. So I think that you're good to avoid that, that avenue for publicities. Onward to what I wanted to say about family, it's just that I was, I voted for and I lobbied a bit for Proposition 1 that made, you know, some of my friends hated me for that, but I really do believe that it was about having guests in your home and it was, and, and I like to have international visitors and I had a lot of reasons why I wanted to have it. But I, I felt like that, this time became very, very divisive for the whole city. If I bring it up with a friend, she'll just say, I don't want to talk about it. I just don't want to talk about it, and she'll leave. And, and I've had people yell at me and say vulgar things to me and it's really, this is, it's crazy. It's just crazy. And as a result of all the high emotions and I think some of the disinformation, there's a lot of confusion about it, you know, a, a very much confusion. And every time I talk about it with a friend, they tell me it is about renting, it's about sneaking students in who will say that they're living as guests, they're, they're just all so afraid. And I think that partly, part of that stems from that irrational, excessive fear of students. And maybe the students were, maybe the students still are horrible. I live in a student neighborhood, I live in a CDBG neighborhood, I live in a dumping neighborhood, and I do not suffer enormously from this problem of, of, you know, of students. And I, I just don't know why everybody, why everybody hates it so much. But I, I said it at the city council meeting, three of my four kids live in university towns and they don't have these hangups. They don't have restrictions on rentals, they don't have to prove that this person is blood related to them in order to live in their house, they do not have to present birth certificates or, I mean, so that's my point, is if you were going to work on a family definition, I want you to write a rule that you would feel comfortable enforcing. And this is crazy. Mine, I have some neighbors who are African-American professors at MSU. Their definition of family is not, you know, is not Aunt Martha's definition of family. It's cousins, it's cousins, ex-sisters-in-laws, it's, you know, it's, it's, family is family. And somebody comes up from Ohio and needs a place to stay for a month or two months, they bring that person in. They don't charge rent, it's a, it's a guest. But when you're trying to make this definition of family, do you really want to be, I mean, how, is this the job of a city to be enforcing this kind of creepy, you know, bring me proof? I think that's what it says in the thing, bring me proof of who you are, you know? Or show me, or show me that you really need to live with this family. That just seems, I understand the problem with rentals and maybe crowding, maybe you can find some way to enforce that. But we're talking now about family and when people say that they're in your family, do you really want to challenge them? You know, I mean, really, is that, is that your job? Is that the city's job? If you end up with some people who are accidentally counted, you know, who accidentally sneak in and do something awful, is that, is that worth challenging my neighbors when they bring up their, you know, their, their cousin's widow? I don't know, who, you know? And do you really, is the list long enough? If, the minute you make a list, there's going to be somebody who's not on the list.
I'll use you of 30 seconds.
Okay, and I think that was it. I think that was it. It's just that I want you to have a definition that's less white and I want you to, and I want you to think of something that you would feel comfortable enforcing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional members of the public wish to step forward?
I thought I'd wait till?
You want to wait till the, yeah, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, that takes us on to, is there anybody online in the, in the queue that wishes to speak?
There is no one in the queue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item 6.1, a public hearing for proposed ordinance 1545, an amendment to the definitions of family in chapter 50, zoning of the city's code of ordinances. Mr. Bartley?
Thank you. So at the January 7th city council meeting, at the request of council, the city attorney had introduced proposed ordinance, which would amend the definition of family in the zoning ordinance. And that would add the words nieces and nephews to the definition, as well as an amendment which, which was added at the meeting that also adds cousins, foster children, and persons living with dwelling unit owner under guardianship. So we have the attached ordinance language that shows the definition in full. If you, if you'd like, I'm happy to read through that or all the different relations that are listed. But at this, at this time, the, the amendment is limited just to adding those words to the definition of family. So again, niece, nephew, cousin, foster children, or persons living with dwelling unit owner under guardianship. We have received correspondence, including from a gentleman here tonight. As I mentioned, there was, we had a little bit of a mix up where attachments didn't get added into your packet, but the email did. And so those are added to your packet tonight, so it's all in there. Just to, out of bonus of caution, we suggested that we also have Mr. Rhodes bring print out, so those were handed out to you as well. And that's, that's the limit of the, I guess, public correspondence that we've received in addition to the comments tonight. In general, our understanding as staff is that this amendment is intended to align the zoning ordinance with changes to the rental housing ordinance, which are contemplated under a different ordinance, 1538. And we, we recommend some caution about the term cousin, just because in vernacular the usage, cousin can refer to people that are more distantly related than, than what you might consider a cousin, which is generally understood to be aunt and uncle's child. That said, we, my understanding is we do have a definition in the rental housing ordinance that would be a little bit closer, that would define more closely, I guess, the word cousin to, to include the meaning of the child of your aunt or uncle, and that would be it. So that would, is intended to remove the potential meaning of cousin that's not the dictionary definition, I guess. There was also a, a housing commission letter that's in your ordinance, or that's in your packet. The housing commission considered this on February 6th and had some consensus that the current language essentially says to, that the, the burden of proving family status is currently on the individual, like a, like a, like the comments you heard earlier tonight, and that the burden should be on the city. I push back on that a little bit from the staff perspective in that I may not have the capacity or the information that's necessary to make that kind of a call. And so I guess I would just exercise some caution. The, the amendment change as proposed has nothing to do with who is doing the family status, but that's just, or who would have the, the burden of proving that, I guess. But I wanted you to be, to be aware that that was included in the recommendations from the housing commission. But again, should you make a recommendation, which you don't have to do tonight, you can if you'd like, but the, the point here of the commission is to consider this ordinance, this amendment and make a recommendation to council as to whether or not to approve, deny, or modify. With that, can I answer any questions? I feel like I, as I, as I like to, I feel like I made it more complicated, but.
Yeah, I'll turn it over first. Commissioner Overbee?
Is this precisely the same language that's in the rental housing ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess four more questions, just a couple of clarifying quick questions. Really all we're looking at is a change to the definition of the term family.
Family.
Right? That's, I'm not missing anything, right?
Correct.
Okay. I also noted the, the same concerns with the cousin, I mean, the second, third cousins, I don't know what would fall into that definition. I mean, I kind of live in this world of, of reviewing legislation and it's not a defined term, so I think that could mean anything. And then I could think of a handful of things that wouldn't be included, like great grandparents. I don't think would necessarily fall into the definition of grandparents. So just, you know, those two quick things, I don't know what else we possibly could get, could be missing. And sometimes when you more specifically spell something out, it, in a way, almost limits things that aren't specifically put in there. And that's a, I don't, I don't want to get into my, like, overall opinion on this yet, but those are some things I, I'd noted upon looking at this really quickly. Is there any other questions? I had more of a background question.
Sure.
No? Can you speak a little bit about where this, this came from? I guess that's, that's kind of the knowledge gap I have here. Who wrote this definition? Why was, why are we considering it?
My understanding is that this came out of a discussion from, from ordinance 1538, which was to mod, to amend the housing ordinance, just saying that the definition of family that was coming out from that housing ordinance or the discussions in that did not match the current definition. So the- So these familial relations would have to be added to the zoning ordinance definition. One thing, so, so this was, I believe, sort of coming out of that process, and then a council member, at least one, had requested the city attorney to prepare this amendment. So this language comes from your attorney.
Okay.
One thing I'll just note for the record is that the definition of family currently says, "or two unrelated persons residing in a dwelling unit," and that the number of unrelated people is not contemplated to change as part of this amendment. There's been some question about that, is two the right number? And that is not part of this amendment, just to add some relations, some different family members to the definition.
So it's hypothetical, if you had, like, your sister and she had two kids and you wanted all three of them to live with you, that wouldn't be possible?
Under the current definition, because niece and nephew are not included, that would not, but with the definition as amended, that would include niece and nephew, so that would be possible.
I'm not talking about the, the category, I'm talking about the total number of, I think you said two unrelated persons?
Correct.
So that would be three people, so that wouldn't-
Right, so, so right now, because the niece and nephew are, according to this definition, not, not part of-
Okay, two unrelated, I understand, yeah. I see it. Family means one person or two related persons or two unrelated persons residing in a dwelling unit.
So I could have me and my sister and a friend of ours, and we'd be considered two unrelated individuals.
But could you have, for, for my example, your sister and your sister's two kids? Three people?
Under the current definition, no. Because niece and nephew are not included.
Okay.
But under the definition as proposed to be amended, they would.
Okay. That's, that's helpful.
Actually, Landon, niece and nephew are included, they're just in a different part of the code. They were added in 2006 when we prepped the suit and they added them, but they put them in the wrong place. You can have-
Okay, yeah. Thanks for the clarification. We'll wait till the, the public comment, just to keep it orderly.
But just to, just to, I guess, capture that comment, that audience member pointed out that niece and nephew are included, just not in this point in the definition, and so this would be a clarifying action.
Okay.
So thank you. Appreciate that.
Understood, thanks. I think that's, that's all the, the questions I have for them all. Commissioner, then.
Your question made me wonder about the, how the city attorney arrived at the language. Do you know if there was any sort of consultation with other municipalities that also have definitions? Do other municipalities have definitions of families? That, have we consulted any of them?
As far as consulting, I know that there has been a review of other ordinances. I don't know if that consultation included, like, calls or anything.
Oh, okay.
City attorney has said they can be available for these meetings if you'd like them to come the next one, to discuss their approach, but they weren't able to come tonight.
My, my question was more, did he just pull this language out of the air? Did he look at other, did he consult other ordinances at, in other municipalities? Okay, good.
Just not quite sure in what form that consultation.
Okay. Do you know, do you know, or could we find out what cities were consulted? Not consulted, I know that word's confusing.
Right. I don't know, we can find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, put another way, is this, is this consistent with how other municipalities handle this, or is, is this a bit of an outlier? And are we kind of chasing our tail with trying to better define this, when maybe there's a, there's a better approach, just that I'm not aware of? I think would be helpful. But also, I understand the position that puts you in with potentially coming up with a, an alternative. I just don't have a, a baseline as to how common this is. I guess just some general commentary would be helpful.
I think it might be helpful to have an attorney at this, at the next meeting to discuss this.
Potentially, yes.
So I'll, I'll request that.
Any other, Mr. Chapin?
Quick question. So our speaker used the word enforcement. I'm going to stay away from the word enforcement and use the word oversight. And I don't think we've talked about that too much here. Can you clarify how this works out after all this work with our words and our, our ultimate definition? Who's responsible for the oversight if a complaint is filed?
It would be city, city staff. Like, the housing division would do an inspection and determine if there's overcrowding.
City staff would be police?
Housing division.
Housing division? Okay. And they would go out and-
They would investigate a complaint, determine is there, how many people are living in this house?
Okay.
And then would have to be able to answer the question somehow.
And we have a, we do have a formal process for that.
It would be a typical housing inspection.
In place, okay. Okay.
Question, very good question. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none. Okay, at this point, we can open the public hearing. So, Mr. Rose, if you'd like to come forward and, and address us. Sorry, I was just trying to keep it orderly before, so I know it's a big audience.
I was involved in the nephew thing in 2006, so I just wanted to remind.
Okay.
That it wasn't a change. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. I'm going to make this, try to get right into five minutes. I have two parts. My first part is to explain to you why this change has nothing to do with the charter amendment. The second part gets into some of your other concerns about the family definition. Patrick Rose, 310 Oxford Road. Ordinance 1545 adds foster children, wards of illegal guardian, and cousins to a family exception to the rental license rules. I support that change, speaking for myself. It expands persons who can live and share costs of rent to survive and thrive without needing a rental license. My first main point today is ordinance 1545's changes to how family is defined are not required by Prop 1, the new charter amendment. This is because Prop 1, by its language, left in place city rent regulations. It also did not change the family definition. Now importantly, originally, Prop 1, as we circulated it to city council and to the city attorney and the city manager, did adopt a state law definition of family. But the Charter Amendment Committee took that new family definition out because of concerns raised by city, the city attorney and council member Carrie Eversole Singh. Proposal 1 has passed, changes nothing in the definition of family members who can live together, share rent, and need no rental license. Here is the key sentence, I want to read it. Sentence 1. "The city shall not restrict in any way relationships of persons living together as a household or residing in the home, comma, or interfere with the rights of owners to live with persons of their choice, comma, as long as such persons are not rent-paying tenants." So what does this mean? It means persons who are rent-paying tenants cannot live together unless one of two things is true. They obtain a rental license or they fit within the family or domestic unit exception to the license rule. Council member Meadows says Prop 1 requires adding cousin, foster child, and ward to the definition of family in the code. That's clearly false. He never said that in the Housing Commission hearings over three meetings, three months. It was not part of the 1538 debate, this was added orally at the last meeting. Let me show you why Mr. Meadows' claim is based on deleting the last clause of Prop 1, removing its qualifying clause, and thereby changing Prop 1's meaning. By taking out the words rent-paying tenant in his email, that you have a copy of, in his letter sent to all residents, in his article in the City Pulse in May 1st, May 1st, we can may in 2024, he removed the last clause. Courts and voters require you read the whole sentence. The bottom line is, when you do read the whole sentence, it's clear Prop 1 changes no family definitions, leaves rental license rules in place, keeps overlay districts, safety rules, per square foot occupancy limits, and changes no zoning rule. We did share a legal opinion with the city council. It's in your packet, Judge Gidding signed it. The council relied on it to vote three to two not to seek to invalidate the amendment on the grounds, we believe that they were convinced it doesn't change zoning rules. So the legal analysis on this, you have from what I provided you, and we think it's absolutely clear that when you look at all the words, no words are deleted, and the rules of grammar apply, that the series modifier rule is what an eighth grade nun in grammar school would teach you. It's what the dictionary tells you. It's what the common sense reading is. It's what voters told us at hundreds of doors that they read this sentence to mean. And we think it's clear, we don't think that there's even a good reasonable argument. But we've also said to council that the minute they go in front of the district court with the very first fine, with the very first case, where this is disputed, we think it will be easily resolved and we can move forward. So we get now to the question of the policy. And we had a long discussion at Housing Commission over four meetings about how to change, if at all, the definition of family. And this was about convincing the voters not to adopt Prop 1 because they were going to expand in a whole variety of ways the restrictive limits on occupancy that made them subject to large fines with no advance notice, retroactively weeks and months, thousands and tens and thousands of dollars of fines. And they were attempting to convince the voters that these changes they were making would alleviate the necessity of the charter amendment. Now that the amendment has passed, we've switched horses to claim that the family definition has to be changed so they can go into court and knock it down. That will go nowhere. But you're still left with the policy question of how the city should deal with defining family. These are people who we don't cover. They're sharing rent, or you have a medical relief child from Africa, as Kath Etzel told council she did, nine separate children from Africa getting heart surgeries as sparrow, who got payments, which is rent. There's no exception for her if you don't add foster child or ward of illegal guardian.
Mr. Rose, your time's up.
I, I wanted, if I could, to give my final point, because it-
Yeah, please give your final point.
It answers the questions you had before. My final point is that, and Mark Redmer asked me to tell you this, he's litigated against the city almost 30 cases from 2012 to 2020 where rental housing fines were imposed. And in those cases, the city did not use the definition of family to enforce the rent regulations. They instead relied on proving rent was paid something of value, and they relied on showing that this person was a tenant or exceeded the occupancy limits. The reason that he said that the city hasn't relied on the definition of family is because it's been ruled unconstitutional. And here's why. The Supreme Court of Michigan in Charter Township of DeNolfo, Delta Township versus DeNolfo, 1984 case, 419 Michigan 253 ruled, families defined by the court. Why? Because the court has said a family is protected by substantive due process rights of freedom of association, and the rights arise as part of the owner's right to live with their own family. A city or a township has no power to limit family members' rights by restricting their ability to use a property by residing together. So what is the constitutional test of family? DeNolfo tells us clearly, and I urge you, read it, it's persons who live together, share expenses, not a commercial relation, and who's living together as a household is more or less indefinite. This is broader than the very restrictive definition East Lansing has. So under this definition, anybody that functions like a family will meet the definition, and it's not up to the city to say. The reason this is so important is that the Supreme Court read this limiting definition in the code in Delta Township and struck it down. It relied on the U.S. Supreme Court case Moore versus City of East Cleveland in 1977. And what happened? The cities across Michigan, including Ann Arbor and Mount Pleasant-
Yeah.
Hello, you've gone over your time, and you have given us the paper here that you're reading from, and we can all read along to, so.
So, so the only, last thing I'll say is, if you look at the functional family test in all of the cities in Michigan that we looked at, which is almost everyone, and around the Midwest, the functional family test is far broader. It's an opt-in test. It doesn't have the restrictive limits. East Lansing wrote their family definition to exclude, and we think it's unconstitutional. So yes, adding to it helps us because it fixes a constitutional problem, but we ask you to do it because it's good policy.
Okay. Thank you for comments. If please, anything additional you want to send us, feel free for, we'll have it on our agenda packet. Anybody else on the public wish to come forward and address the commission? Is there anyone online in the queue?
No. There is not anyone.
Okay. At this point, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any additional questions or guidance for city staff? So just to kind of put a cap on the previous conversation, I think we need perhaps a better understanding of context behind this, this definition, as to, you know, similar ordinances, how they arrived at this decision. I don't know if the city attorney necessarily has to be here, but it would be, would be helpful. And yeah, I guess I'm just trying to grasp what problem we're, we're trying to, to solve with this, so. And I think, you know, potentially the city council member that helped draft this could be here to explain some of that background as well, would be helpful for, I think, me and hopefully the rest of the commission. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I believe we'll, we'll see this, oh, Commissioner Chapin.
I appreciate what you just said. I mean, I appreciate good work from good attorneys, but frankly, the material in our packet coupled with this, coupled with other inputs, confuses me. I want to make a good, clean vote. And I'm not really sure right now what I'm voting on, so I'm just supporting your comments there, Joseph. Whatever we can do to simplify this in a way that makes for a reasonable vote, I think we want to set the city council up for success here, and we'll, I think it's important that we spend some time on that. That said, my orientation of this is to be inclusive as opposed to exclusive. So I want to vote in a way that is reasonable to my orientation. I speak for myself, I don't speak for everybody, but I come to this from an orientation of being inclusive, not exclusive.
Yeah. Also, well said.
Okay.
Another thing I, I don't think I noted too, but the, the letter that's in our packet from Housing Commission noted that their commissioners outlined concern and had consensus around adding language that places burden on not individuals, but instead city staff to kind of make the determination about what's, what's considered family. I think it's the point they're trying to get at. It's a pretty short line in the, in the letter, but anyway, says something else. I'm curious if that's worth exploring. But with anything that's on our agenda, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what problem we're trying to solve, and that escapes me at this point, I think. So no final questions? I think we'll, we'll move on to item 7.1. Item 6.1 will be on a later Planning Commission agenda, anticipated being on a later agenda, potentially when we next meet in March.
And like I mentioned, all requests of the city attorney be present at this meeting for that, so we can have a bigger discussion. There won't be any, you won't necessarily need to vote next time if you feel like you still need more information. It is general practice of the Planning Commission to have a public hearing and then vote in the next meeting. It's not required to do so. Which would be a great segue into the discussion of bylaws if you'd like.
Yeah.
I think one, or a request of Landon. I think we, we've made it really clear that we would like some additional context as to how we came to this definition. But at the same time, I also feel like we are certainly not the first city that has ever had to deal with this. And so I also wonder if there's other ordinances and enforcement measures or procedures that we could have brought to us as examples, that we could draw from, just so that we have anything to compare to. I know that's putting a lot of extra research work on, on, in your hands and on your staff's plates, but I think it would, this is not something that we have to, we should be expected to recreate from the ground up. There are other cities that have probably done this, and it would be helpful to see what has been successful in other municipalities.
I can also see what sort of information was made available to the Housing Commission for their discussions.
Perfect.
Because we didn't have that level of, I guess, discussions at staff level.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good point. Takes us on to our unfinished business portion of tonight's agenda, item 7.1, discussion of potential changes to the Planning Commission bylaws. Mr. Bartley, do you want to give an update or overview?
Sure. Thank you. The, we had discussed these briefly last, at the last meeting, and essentially among discussion, among staff, with, with Planning Commission at various times, we've talked about. Basically, our, our bylaws are written in such a way that could be clarified. The first is the meeting schedule. It, it doesn't, the section doesn't really allow for exceptions to meeting on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month. Typically, the commission doesn't hold a second meeting during November, December, due to holidays, and sometimes, including this year, has to schedule a meeting on a different Wednesday due to different circumstances. So we propose simply removing, or excuse me, adding a sentence that says, "Unless otherwise determined by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, yada, 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 the Planning Commission will meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays." So that's- So that's the first proposed amendment. Any questions about that?
What's the OMA, I'm sorry, Open Meetings Act requirement on posting for, is it thirty days?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days? Okay. That's helpful, because I was thinking.
Sorry, fifteen, right? One five.
Yeah. I was asking, is it fifteen?
It's fifteen.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were, I was confirming it's fifteen. I'm like, I don't know that it's fifteen.
Yes, no, I thought you said fifty.
Okay. That's the only question I had there. I think that makes this a little bit more practical. There's thirty days, you know, like, how would we know thirty days out whether we're gonna, I mean, on occasion, I guess, but.
Well, and typically, you'll schedule your meeting in the last or one or two meetings before the end of the year. So you schedule your, set your meeting schedule for the following year. We typically go along with the second and fourth Wednesdays unless there's another need. And we just want to give the commission that ability formally to change that scheme.
So it's adding flexibility. It's in no way restricting our ability.
Correct.
Okay. That's, thank you. Any questions on that item? Okay.
Second proposed amendment is quorum. It currently designates five members as quorum, and we've been very lucky in that we generally have not had quorum issues, but we've come close a couple of times. And especially when there are vacancies, again, luckily, we don't have vacancies right now. Welcome Commissioner Putz. But we propose to, for those cases, when we have lower memberships on the commission, should that ever come to happen, let's hope not, but can we say a majority of commissioners appointed and serving shall constitute a quorum? Just so, let's say, in case that we have seven, we could say then that four is the quorum because the majority of those versus five, which is sort of the set number as it is right now. Any thoughts or questions on that?
I think this one is probably the most helpful of all these for us, because we've definitely run into that issue a couple of times, where we had a few vacancies, and then basically, almost everybody has to show up to a meeting, and it's pretty tough. So if this is something we can do, I, you know, I think it's a good idea. So any questions on that item before we move to the next? Seeing none?
Last one is, is simply to the process. As you know, you found yourself periodically suspending your rules to allow a vote at the same meeting as the public hearing, a vote to recommend action by the council. And sometimes, you know, the applicant will request that, they have something of some urgency, or some of the reason that action at the same meeting would be required. Your bylaws currently say, as a general rule, the commission will act on, on an issue at the next regular meeting after the public hearing. So technically speaking, as a general rule, we probably don't have to suspend the rules to say that. We had proposed just removing that sentence altogether. If it makes sense to you to, to vote, vote. If it doesn't make sense, come back in the next meeting. And we'll just kind of give you that flexibility without potentially having a conflict with the bylaws, although I don't think that there really is one. This would be intended more as a clarification, unless it's a, less of a policy change.
For example, some of these larger developments we see, we see a public hearing, we provide feedback, they come back with a new site plan, we're not ready to vote on it yet, we can kick it out a couple of meetings and thoroughly deliberate it before voting on it. It kind of removes the expectation that it's automatically a two, two-hearing process.
Correct.
Okay.
It could be one, it could be one meeting, could be two, could be three.
Okay.
And generally, as sort of staff recommendation, we would say, if you need more information or you feel that you can't make a decision that night, you should wait. If you can, you should act. But it also, you know, we have a level of comfort based on how things have been done, and I'm not looking to change things necessarily just to allow you to change them if you want to.
Yeah. I think it makes sense. Any questions?
Maybe I have a question. Should we wait for, do you want me to wait for discussion?
I think this one's a little bit different because it's kind of a handful of things. I think if you're going to give your full opinion on everything, maybe we can, we can, unless you have any, do you have any questions?
That's what, that was my clarifying question.
Do you want me to wait for discussion? Because I do have general feelings about this.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah, we can, we can make a motion. One thing I will note is I do not see a sample motion in the agenda.
I put a sample motion in the recommendation.
Did you?
The motion right there, the recommendation, right?
Oh, I see it. Yeah, I was, I always look at the bottom. It's not at the bottom, so.
That's why I volunteer, because it's so simple.
Please, are you volunteering to be the new motion, motion master? Okay.
Commissioner Chapeen is going to be the new motion maker.
So motion by Commissioner Chapeen?
I move to amend Planning Commission bylaws as presented, number one, to allow regular meetings to be scheduled on days other than the second or fourth Wednesdays, two, to allow for a quorum to be a majority of those appointed and serving, and three, to allow the commission to act at the same meeting as a public hearing without requiring a suspension of the rules.
Is there a second on this so we can discuss?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Wagner. Okay. Since you made the motion, do you want to make any initial comments? And then I know Commissioner Denault has.
No, actually, I think this is, I think there's some more complicated issues later in the agenda, but I think this is pretty clean. I appreciate you updating this, so it's just words for us, so I'm thumbs up.
Yeah. Commissioner Denault?
I think I don't have any issues with the first or second recommendations. I think where I have some, it gives me pause to allow, to remove the sentence as a general rule, the commission will act on an issue at the next regular meeting after a public hearing, I think first because there are very rare instances that we actually do this. And it has, I think, worked for us so far. We have generally agreed, I think, as a body, that when it necessitates us suspending this rule, that we do. I think more importantly, though, the reason that this change gives me pause is one of the things that I find very valuable as a commissioner is the opportunity to hear from other people, folks who live in East Lansing. And I think by offering more opportunities for people to attend meetings and to share their perspectives, it allows us to make better, more informed decisions. And so I just fear that by limiting a meeting to one hearing and voting, for who knows what reason, a parent might not be able, who really cares about an issue, might not be able to come to this meeting, or come to that meeting, right? But they might be able to come to the next meeting. And so I, I think I would rather not, I would rather not edit this piece because it'll, we have the flexibility to decide if we want to suspend our rules or not, but generally, this allows for more public input, which is really valuable for us on this commission.
It's a good point. I think in a way, though, this eliminates the expectation that it's just going to be two hearings, so it could be more than two hearings. And the language is so soft as it's already in here, it's just as a general rule. So it's, it almost sets up the expectation that you're not automatically going to take a vote on something at the next hearing, you're going to extend it out potentially based on several variables, such as complexity, so. I don't know. I think it's, I understand your point. I'll give you an opportunity to respond before I say anything else.
No, I just think by having that language in there, it provides some basic guidance about how long this process might ideally take. I think I worry that by taking out that general guidance, we signal to developers that there's now potentially an expectation that, oh, they'll just take care of this all in one meeting. Whereas, I don't know, I think I would rather than speed up the development process, I would rather create more space to hear more voices from my neighbors.
Yeah.
If I may, the, this wouldn't change the number of public hearings. So there'd be still simply a public hearing, and then at the next meeting, as unfinished business, the Planning Commission takes up. So that, I mean, there would be an opportunity for general public comment at the beginning of the agenda, but there wouldn't be a second public hearing for an item in and of itself as, that's the current state, so there's still just one public hearing. But it does give the second opportunity at the public comments phase. But I also argue that the city council is going to see every development proposal as well, special uses, they require their own public hearing, site plans, they don't. But that also has the opportunity for the public to speak at that meeting.
And I agree with you, Landon, and I really appreciate those comments, but I also think one of the reasons that I, the city council agenda is always so packed. And I wonder if sometimes it's a heavier burden on busy adult lives to sit through that entire meeting, to make your comment on a thing that's an hour into the agenda. You know, oftentimes, gratefully, our meetings are slightly shorter. And so I, and I hear you that it's not going to, I think, the process will generally stay the same, but I also feel like the, by removing, by not removing this, the process also stays the same. So I prefer having the general guidance that to, the general signal to developers, like, this is going to take at least, at least two meetings, if not more, rather than saying, this might take one meeting.
Would you like to make a motion to revise the initial motion?
Sure. I would move to amend, well, I have to offer.
I think it's just.
I was going to say, just to take away number three from.
Exactly, just strike.
Commissioner Chapeen's motion.
Is there a second?
You know, I'm, can I, may I comment?
Yeah, well, I think we need a second for the purposes of discussion. So if there's a second, then we can.
Okay.
And I guess you could discuss that again at the overall motion, but I think there's, needs to be a second in order to discuss that particular motion. We can have a second on it for the purposes of discussion.
I won't second my motion.
Okay. Okay, so seeing no second on that motion, I think the motion fails, and we move on to the original motion, discussion of the original motion. Correct, Landon?
Correct.
I'm coming on the original motion.
Okay.
So this would allow us to do what we can currently do with, by suspending the rules. So the question that I ask myself is, does that step of suspending the rules allow us to accomplish something that, that we couldn't if this, if we didn't have to do? And I don't know what the answer to that is. Does it slow the process down? Does it require us to think about it? I, I admit I don't know the answer to that. And I will say that these, all three of these feel to me like housekeeping items that really, in the grand scheme of our work, will not make a significant difference.
Let me ask that in a slightly different way. So if we strike this, do we then, at subsequent meetings, have to suspend the rules to take up an action item that night? So that would just eliminate basically a step between us, we still have to vote on, right?
This wouldn't actually eliminate any step. I mean, it would just.
But you wouldn't have to make a motion to suspend the rules to take up and.
Technically speaking, you don't right now.
We don't already have to do it because.
Generally speaking, the Planning Commission will look at this and then vote at the next.
So in all practicality, deleting this language does nothing to really change how we operate.
I think the Commissioner Denault's point that it's sort of a signal, although I kind of push back and say developers don't read Planning Commission bylaws. They, although, they would ask us, and I would think we would say, generally, the Planning Commission takes two meetings. If you, if you want them to take one, you should ask them. And I think that would still be our practice, unless we start to see the Planning Commission change its practice of just going to one meeting. And then I would say, okay, maybe this change is affecting our practice. And then at that point, I would say, maybe you'd want to bring back a motion to change that.
Yeah.
No one seconds my motion.
I have experiences in Chelsea, so.
Yeah.
You know, actually, I would like to make.
Yeah, Commissioner Chapeen, sorry.
No, I would like, I think, I don't disagree with anything you've just said, but I think we have control over whether we have a second hearing or not. And I have faith that we'll be able to track the dialogue, track the narrative, and basically stay, I guess I'm forwarding this motion, thinking that we're going to probably stay with our, our current cadence to all of this. And I think we just have control. And I think, you know, we're sort of six to one, half dozen to another, in my mind. So I'm going to work with the recommendation from the staff and, and put that into play. That's, that was my thinking.
Exactly what I'm thinking. I don't think this changes how we operate. I think it's more so just like cleaning up the language of the bylaws. I think those are valid points. There shouldn't be like, I guess, guidance for us to start rushing through projects, but, you know, I'm supportive of. The other thing I wanted to say briefly is, I think, you know, the bylaws are in front of us now. I think this was a good opportunity to give us a chance to review these bylaws, and I don't think this should necessarily be the end of the discussion on the bylaws in general if there's anything else in here that any commissioners feel like they would want to change at a subsequent meeting. I think we can vote on this today and kind of move forward these changes, but now that the bylaws are before us, take a close look at these and see if there's anything else you, you'd want to change going forward, is the only thing I have. So any additional comments, and then I think we should, we should vote on this. Okay, Vice Chair Wagner?
I would just like to say, I echo your comments here. I think removing that sentence for, you know, recommendation three would just give us a more flexibility. I don't think that we're going to start rushing projects. We always have a lot of questions, I think, and it's not going to change that process. But I do take your point, Chelsea, about input from, from different people, but people can also call in and they can email. I mean, so there's, it's more than just, you know, the, the public comment on the night of. So I'm not, I don't have any problems with, with this. I'm going to be voting for it.
Any last questions or comments? Seeing none, could we get a real call vote on this?
Certainly. Commissioner Chapeen, how do you vote? I'm so sorry, I should restate that we have a motion on the table from, to approve all three changes as proposed by Commissioner Chapeen, seconded by Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Chapeen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Denault?
No.
Commissioner Overby?
Yes.
Commissioner Putz?
Yes.
Sowaluski is absent. Vice Chair Wagner?
Yes.
And Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
You guys have it.
Thank you. And then as far as process, this is, this is done, right? Obviously, this doesn't go to council or anything, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Item number seven point two, discussion of a portion of ordinance 1543, amendments intended to be corrections and clarifications to Chapter 50 zoning and Chapter 32 signs of the City of East Lansing's Code of Ordinance. Mr. Bartley?
Thank you. So at our January twenty-second meeting, we discussed about probably a little over half of these proposed amendments. These amendments are intended to be corrections and clarifications and not policy changes. I've given you sixty-four pages of redlined document of different amendments. As much as they're meant to be all minor clarifications and corrections, I guess we found a lot, so. But since we went through articles one through five, I wanted to begin with Article Six and go through the rest of the code as proposed. I know the staff report looks like a lot of, you know, four pages or so of describing these changes, but I can assure you, a lot of them are duplicates. So what I'd like to do is just go through from my staff report, and you can see the summary, if you wanted to follow along with the redlined text. These begin on page thirty-nine of sixty-four. Essentially, we have, for the, the business office and industrial districts, you'll see very similar proposed changes for the B1, B2, B3, B4, and B5 zones, also OIP. And C essentially saying, we have a section in the, in the beginning of the ordinance, Section fifty dash one fifty, Sub Three, that says childcare centers and daycare centers are special uses within all business districts, but it's not reflected in the actual language of the zone district. So if casual readers were to look at that and say, oh, I guess I can't have a childcare center in a business district, although they can as a special use. So we wanted to simply add that to the list of special uses. Childcare centers and daycare centers as special uses within all zone districts. A very similar change early on in the code, Section fifty dash one five two, talks about ATMs, and that includes specific requirements for ATMs in, in the B business zone districts. So simply adding a reference back to that section so that the casual reader, seeing, oh, I want to have an ATM in this district, oh, there are extra regulations. oh, I want to have an ATM in this district, oh, there are extra regulations I should go check out. There's some renumbering as we sort of move, uh, sections around principal permitted uses, putting up to the front instead of at the back. Uh, so that's essentially like the changes proposed for B1. You'll see in B2, uh, same thing, looking to renumber, move, move sections around a little bit for consistency, add childcare centers and daycare centers to special uses, add the references to ATMs. Uh, one item that is in the B2 that wasn't in the B1 is that we are adding language to special uses subsection J, which talks about restaurants, or excuse me, establishments that are licensed for retail sale of alcohol. There's been some discussion as to whether or not the, the city can or cannot, uh, um, govern or regulate, uh, stores that sell alcohol for off-site consumption, and essentially we can't. But we wanted to introduce language just to make that point gently so that if, if state of Michigan rules change, then our ordinance would change along with it. So it still sort of includes land use as a special use, but it says subject to state of Michigan requirements. Uh, and, and we have similar language in other business districts as proposed here. Any questions about, I guess, that one or anything else I've talked about? Okay. In the B3 zone, uh, same thing, moving things around, adding childcare centers and daycares, adding the references to ATMs, and that's, that language referring to state of Michigan requirements for local review and approval of alcohol sale, uh, for off-site consumption. The B4, look at that, same thing, exactly in the B5, looking at doing the same thing. Uh, also with the alcohol sales in the B5, those are not permitted in the B4 anyway, so we didn't include that as a change. Uh, toward the bottom of this page, we talk about the OIP zone district, office industrial, uh, office, maybe office industrial park, I think. We have about four properties in the city that are zoned OIP. But let's, uh, let's clarify, so we, we had included permitted uses from a mass timber ordinance that this body and the council approved, uh, last year, so we wanted to include that as a permitted use. Uh, same thing with childcare centers and daycare centers, uh, wanted to include that as a special use. That's it for OIP. In the C, community zone district, also adding childcare centers and daycare centers, uh, adding a subsection that talks about uses that are approved by special use. Uh, that's all for that one. Uh, so basically, those are the changes to the zone districts that are proposed, all essentially meant to be housekeeping, meant to be correcting or adding references to make it easier to read. That's it. Um, gonna move on then? Residential rental restriction overlay districts, not proposing any policy changes. What we're proposing is a correction, there was an error, uh, there was an ordinance 1291 that was adopted in March 2013 for sort of the northwest, north central part of Glen Curran neighborhood. 1060 Glen Haven was somehow left out of the ordinance. We went back through and found the previous staff reports, we found the minutes, there was no intent to leave that off, it just was a, was a misstep. So we're just simply correcting essentially an omission, uh, that wasn't intended to include 1060 Glen Haven, uh, in the overlay district there. Um, in the East Village Zone District, there were several definitions, uh, that were special to the East Village Zone District. Uh, we've been trying to consolidate all the definitions into one area in chapter one, excuse me, article one of the zoning ordinance, and we just added some text saying, hey, these definitions were here, they moved. Uh, we're moving some permitted uses sections around, uh, to try to make it sort of more consistent with the other zone districts and renumbering other sections as, as needed. But again, just changing the order, uh, and, and lettering of the different sections. Uh, and then as it, with some of the other business zone districts, adding that language about the retail sale of alcohol for off-site consumption, subject to state of Michigan requirements for local review and approval. So, those are the zone districts, changes, all of them. Uh, any questions before we move on? Off-street parking requirements. There were some definitions in the electrical vehicle charging stations section, we're consolidating those, adding similar language that we did for East Village. Uh, article 10 is about non-conforming uses and structures, and I want to be careful with this one because when you start making amendments to this section in particular, it tends to become a policy change very easily, uh, because non-conforming uses and structures and such are, are, uh, are, could be a can of worms. Um, so essentially, we're, we're proposing to add text that is meant to clarify the procedures. So saying, if you, if you reduce your non-conformity, essentially removing part of that non-conformity, that, that part that was removed would no longer conform. So if you were then, so you'd still have a non-conforming structure, but the structure would still have non-conforming rights, it can still exist, but the part that was removed is gone. You cannot restore that, uh, because it's not conforming the district. This wouldn't be a policy change. That's the rules it is right now. We're trying to clarify that you essentially would not, once reduced, you cannot expand back to its previous size for a non-conforming use. Does that make sense? Are there any questions about this sentence? Okay. Um, moving on then, there's a subsection five.
Vice Chair Wagner has a question.
I'm sorry to make you go back. Can, can we talk about electric vehicle charging stations one more time?
Yes, there were some definitions that were specific to the section about electrical vehicle charging stations.
So, but it looks like A through D were eliminated, and it said these were defined in sections 5.5 through 5, oh, sorry, 50 dash 5 through 50 dash 9. And I didn't see those anywhere. Am I just missing them or? Cause it, it looks like to me, we've just removed a bunch of stuff about...
They've been, they've been moved, so, and, um, so that there's green text that if it's crossed out, that means it's been moved somewhere else.
Oh, it's not been eliminated.
The, the red text, which crossed out means this is deleted.
I'm sorry.
Green text is crossed out, it's moved elsewhere.
Kind of helpful for me. I struggled with that too, cause it's a little different than what I'm used to. On page five, there's a key that helps.
Okay, sorry, I missed the...
Yeah. I did too the first time I read it, I was like...
Completely understandable, it's a...
Yeah.
I'm with you.
These, these red lines are, are something.
Sorry.
Does that clarify or...
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Can you offer, Landon, some clarity about, um, the non, the changes to the non-conforming uses and structures? When it's reduced in size, it can't, that non-conforming use shall be considered to be abandoned? Can you give an example of what that might, a situation where that might be a thing?
Sure. So let's say you have a building that was constructed, um, uh, we, let's see here, hold on. I'm conflating...
Yeah, so sorry for the pop quiz, but...
That was fun. Let's say you have an ordinance, uh, in the East Village District, you have a required building line. So let's say that there was a, a building constructed in 1955 that is not at that required building line. So that, that structure is non-conforming due to location on the property. It's too far back.
Yeah.
Uh, required building line means instead of having a minimum setback, you have to build to that line. Uh, so, and this is just an example because the East Village has that required building line. Um, so let's say that there's a house on the property and there's an addition in the back, and the addition burns and is removed. That is, that was part of the non-conforming structure that has now been reduced in size.
And they can't add it back?
The addition is, is gone, no longer has non-conforming rights. The house that's remaining is still there, still has non-conforming rights, but you can't expand back to what's been removed.
Okay.
I should say burned in certain circumstances.
I was gonna say, if you removed it, yeah.
Yeah, but if, if it's been removed, uh, then it can't come back.
Like, for instance, if there was an enclosed porch, right, that someone found to be structurally unsound, they took it off, you can't put it back on?
Depending on where the enclosed porch was, yeah.
Okay.
So if the, if the location of that porch was non-conforming...
Right.
And you took it off, you would not be able to put it back.
Okay.
And so this is just saying, that part that was removed is gone. No more rights to the gone part.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we had a similar section that said, you cannot, if, if the, if the non-conforming structure has been relocated for any reason, then it is, you cannot continue to use it. And we're seeing circumstances like, let's say somebody built a garage. Again, non-conformities, I want to clarify, something is illegal if, if it's done by your action, something is non-conforming if it's done by government's action. So if the code changed sort of from under you, now you still, but you, but you built something legally at the start of it, you have non-conforming rights. Like, the ordinance has changed, not what you did. So, so let's say you built a garage under, uh, current, the right rules, you know, you followed, followed the rules, built a garage in your backyard, but then the ordinance changed and you said, oh, I can't have the garage here. I'm gonna move it to a conforming location. Under the, the way the code is currently read, and I guess this does stray into a little bit of a policy change, the way that the code is currently written says, if you move that non-conforming structure, you can't use it anymore. And we're saying, wait, the reason you're moving it is to get to a conforming location, not to remove the use of it. So we wanted to allow that continued use if you're moving the structure to a conforming location. So I guess that starts to stray, like I mentioned, non-conformities, you start to talk, change the words, it can change it into a policy change. I think this is sort of a minor policy change, but it, it might be one of those. If you're not comfortable with that, we can remove it and bring it back another time. I think it's still, I still kind of look at it as a correction. I don't think the intent was to remove the ability of, of owner to use that structure. Um, okay. And then, uh, same thing, we don't currently say, we, we wanted to allow somebody to get closer to conformity with the ordinance, instead of if they have some non-conforming element of a building or structure, whatever it might be. And you, as, as our code is currently written, and again, I guess I'm, this is probably a slight, close to a policy change, or it is, but I would consider it as a correction. Uh, essentially, right now, we're saying that if you, if you're not compliant for some reason and you do something to the property, you must come into full compliance. And that sometimes is prohibitively expensive to bring a site up to full compliance when you're just making some small change. So this would allow the property owner to not bring something to full compliance, but as long as they can show they're getting closer to compliance, then we would be able to permit it. Any questions or comments on that? The last thing about, for the zoning ordinance is that we just like to renumber all the permitted uses across all the sections, so they're alphabetical. Um, right now, you can tell that they've been added many times, you know, there have been a lot of amendments since this code was adopted, and so we, they're not in any particular order. It would, it would reorder a lot of things, but I wanted to sort of make sure that if you guys don't feel strongly or say, no, let's just leave it as it is, I don't want to go through and change everything if, if you wouldn't be supporting this change. I'd like to renumber all the permitted uses so they're in alphabetical order. Does that sound good to the commission? Okay. Okay, the last changes I want to talk about, uh, to chapter 32 signs. There is a section in the sign ordinance that talks about for ground signs in commercial office professional premises in the D-Day District that says, okay, well, your height, there's a requirement that the, the height of the sign, if you have it a certain height, it has to be setback a certain amount, uh, and the surface area, you know, it has to be limited to a certain amount, and sort of, as you move it around on the property, as it gets closer or further from the right of way, the sign can get larger or smaller. Uh, and so, but the issue is that the example text doesn't actually meet the ordinance, it sort of confuses things. So we just said, let's get rid of the example text because it's erroneous. We also, there's a directory sign, or there's a sign that's allowed in professional and business offices that's not, it, it's not listed as a directory sign, but it's clearly intended to be that. Uh, so we just wanted to say, this is a directory sign, and yes, you can have it in addition to the other signs. Finally, getting back into non-conformities, for alteration or re-establishment of non-conforming signs. We wanted to make very clear, when and how can a non-conforming sign be maintained? Because right now, it's, the code says, you can't maintain a non-conforming sign. You can't place it, you can't install it, can't do anything to that, it's not supposed to be there. And a non-conforming sign can be, but there, but it's certain, in my opinion, some strange language, it says, unless you're the original owner when the sign was, but if it's a new owner, which from a zoning perspective, you gotta be neutral on people, right? Who's doing it is not important, what it is is the important part. So we just wanted to allow a reduction in size of a non-conformity and without losing non-conforming rights, we wanted to allow maintenance of the sign so it can be continued, which is particularly important in electronic signs. Uh, that sign can continue, but when it's removed or reduced, it can't come back to that size, right? So that's a non-conformity issue. If you take it away, you can't bring it back, but as long as it's there, do we really want a non-conforming signs to fall into disrepair, which is what happens to non-conforming signs just on the side? People are like, well, I don't have rights to that. If I take it out, I won't be able to put it back, so I'm gonna leave it there. Oh, I can't maintain it? Well, I'm gonna leave there as long as it will stay there. And so you start essentially having signs that fall into disrepair, but they're still in good shape. And then, and then we, then if we have enforcement, they're, they're gonna be like, you're not letting me maintain it. So we wanted to sort of clarify what is, what is maintenance, what's allowed, uh, in this section. And so we had removed the subsections that say, you can't maintain, you can't display a non-conforming sign after, by a new owner or, or after June 1st, 2019, which is when this section was adopted, as far as I know, or last amended. Any questions on that? Any questions on any of this? I believe there's still corrections. If you feel uncomfortable at anything that I've mentioned, we can pull it out. I'm not looking for a vote tonight, looking for discussion, thoughts, comments, and then we can bring it back to you next time for a, um, public hearing and recommendation, or public hearing, and then maybe a recommendation or wait until the next one.
First of all, I'm, I'm delighted to hear you're not expecting a vote on this. It's just, it's a lot to process, a lot of it makes a lot of sense to me. Um, I was gonna let you finish, cause you did answer a couple of my questions, but I did, I did have a chance to go through it and I wanted to note a couple of things. Um, if everyone will hear me, I'll go through as quickly as possible. Um, so the definition of major streets is confusing to me on page 13. So it's Grand River, Hagadorn, and Bog. I just don't understand why, like, Michigan, Avon Sag and our, aren't included. It, it seemed like, seems like a common sense addition. I understand maybe Harrison not being on there.
That's a, that's a great point. This is, and this is one of the ones, you can see it's a green underlined, which means it's been moved, and that was one of the ones that was moved from the East Village District.
Okay.
So major streets across the city include far more streets than Grand River, Hagadorn, and Bog.
Yeah.
Including Saginaw, including Lake Lansing, including Abbott, uh, including Harrison, including Michigan. Anything that you think of as a major street, including some streets you might not think of as major streets. Grove is considered a major street, right? But, uh, so, so this, this is intended to be, that was from the East Village District. Looking at that, didn't even think about when moved it, it doesn't make sense that it is, as it is. I would say that we'd either remove it altogether, because there's a major street map out there, or just refer to that. Major streets are as defined in this map.
I, I think that's a much, that's, that's a much preferable way to go about it, because, I don't know, like, every time you have a comprehensive master plan update and maybe there's redevelopment in a certain area, like, you know, kind of Troll Bridge, Harrison, that area is probably gonna build up over the next couple of decades with what the university's doing. You'd have to update this definition potentially, so that, that makes sense to me. I think that's a good way to go about that. On 17, I, I, I thought about this one a lot, I'm just struggling with the definition of pool a little bit, and let me give you an example. Um, my kids have an inflatable pool that's probably, I think, 24 inches deep. The term fixed in place, waiting pools, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if that would be considered a pool under this and would be considered a, a structure, uh, by the city. I think you'd have to have maybe some overzealous enforcement to consider it that, but, um, I don't know. Is there a way we could carve out things like that that maybe, you know, it's inflatable?
Yes, yes and no. If it's still 24 inches wa, of water, it's subject to more codes. So including like, so that's when sort of the building code kicks into place and they say, okay, hold on, this is 24 inches deep. This is when we have to start being concerned about safety. Um, and so that's why we have the 24 inches, that refers directly to the building code requirements about pool safety. Uh, so you're saying like, carve out an exception for waiting pools. I would say the, the waiting pool, the inflatable pool would be fine as long as it's not 24 inches deep.
Yeah. I mean, what's the intent here? It's like, I think you're, you're considering it as structure, you're putting things in place like setback requirements, like, I mean, that just doesn't really apply to something that's inflatable or, or temporary. I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, it's just something I was, I was mulling over.
So the, and, and I guess, to add to that though, the, this is intended to introduce a definition and just create a definition of pool, so it wouldn't change any requirements. So as it is right now, if you have water that's 24 inches deep, waiting pool or not, inflatable or not, if the building inspector looks at it, they're gonna be like, wait, hold on. This, this is now set into my code. So this wouldn't change any way that that pool is regulated, but it would just add a definition.
Okay. For the record, the pool I have is, is now 23 inches deep.
I assume so.
So, um, why, page 18, why is there a definition for, for rooming house? Like, why is that ever applicable? I know we, we had the bed and breakfast discussion for a while, it just seems...
The, the definition of rooming house is there because rooming house is referred to[1774.82] The definition of rooming house is there because rooming house is referred to elsewhere in the code. And if it's, especially when it comes to housing, you want to make sure you define every term that's referred to in the code. However, a very astute member of the public pointed out to me that. This essentially is the same thing as a class four rental, or class four house, like license, rental license, license for up to four people, so. Except that we don't issue class four licenses anymore. So this, this definition as proposed is kind of problematic, because it kind of, I think we need to adjust it. I would propose that we adjust it. We work on that to adjust it to make it work and not. Not be, I guess duplicated another sort of housing type. Or we remove it altogether, but also remove references to rooming house in the code.
Yeah, I mean, why do we have references to rooming house in the code, I guess is my, my question, like, what purpose does that serve? Does it, is it a category that exists separate from any other rental or bed and breakfast, I mean, if it's. The term seems a bit antiquated, I don't, it's not really in common.
Yeah. And generally, we don't, we don't, I mean, we also have lodging house at places. Those generally aren't listed in permitted uses in the districts, so I think we could, could potentially remove those altogether.
Okay, I don't think we need to solve it tonight, I'm just flagging that.
That makes sense.
It does have a phrase, and all other dwellings similarly occupied, so I would be happy, you know, we could get rid of rooming house.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell the difference between a lodging house, a boarding house, and a rooming house, and a bed and breakfast, I think.
That's the definition, or that's the direction I'm leaning to. Another thing I noted on page twenty-five, you have your, it's listed, you know, foster family homes, foster family group homes, family daycare centers. So I know that the state for a while has a lot of different licenses for different types of facilities like that. I don't know if you want some sort of a catch-all here that just says, you know, licensed facility, or, I don't know what the solution is, I'm just noting that.
I'm sorry, I need to find, oh, you're looking at the page, number of the PDF, I'm sorry, I was looking at the page.
Yeah, yeah, page, sorry, page twenty-five of the PDF, that's what I'm gonna refer to, that's what my notes reference, so. One C, foster home, foster family, family daycares, I, I don't know, or similar state license, or some other phrase probably could be added there. Because I think the state for a while has wanted to consolidate those to a more common license, so they're not all licensed different with different requirements.
Um, that's, that's well noted, so this is referring, this is very similar to the changes that I've mentioned tonight about adding childcare center, daycare center. So there's a section earlier in this ordinance that says, foster family, foster family group homes and family daycare homes. Shall be permitted principal uses in all residential zone districts. But you wouldn't know that if you didn't look at that section, so we wanted to add that in these permitted uses sections. I think we could ask, add some sort of language, like, or some of the state licensed facility in both places. I just want to make sure, this, this is intended to duplicate what's elsewhere in the code already, that you wouldn't otherwise know.
And then on page twenty-eight, with the table for minimum setbacks for buildings.
Yes.
I guess, I, I looked at this for a bit, and so structure, or accessory building, would that include a deck? Because that's a very big setback for a deck or a patio, or. A shed.
Twenty, page twenty-eight.
Yeah, so the table that you have on page twenty-eight, section fifty dash three twenty-three, required conditions, setback requirements. So this is for principal and accessory buildings?
Oh, I see, I see.
For that, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but I thought that those seem like pretty significant setbacks, and I, I think a shed and a deck would fall into that.
So we can, we can adjust that for accessory buildings. I think that makes sense.
Okay. I think there might be.
Actually, no, I don't think we should. Just because that's a, I mean, we could, but that would be a policy change. Because right now that is language as existing, all we're changing is the minimum setbacks that are. We've added, we've clarified that there are the setbacks for individual subdivided lots, which doesn't change what was already in the table essentially. So, so as it was, there was already a twenty-foot setback essentially from.
So the setbacks aren't being changed?
Right. What we're doing is, is keeping that twenty-foot setback, but adding the five-foot setback. I mean, I guess that's a policy change too.
But from, from rear, so from, you're telling me from rear lot, there, there can't be a shed closer than twenty feet from the back of a rear lot?
As it currently stands, yes. I think we could, it would certainly be within the planning commission's right to say, let's change that, and, and make it five feet, or whatever you want it to be. Uh, we just want to note it that that would be a policy change.
Is, where's the, we can, yeah, let's, let's discuss that later, that seems, maybe we're, we're missing something there, I don't know. That seems very, very restrictive. For just like a, a small shed would be considered a accessory building, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I bought a two-hundred-dollar shed this summer, it's in the side lot, not the rear lot, so I think I'm good, but twenty feet, like, I don't know.
The only thing I'd point out is that this is in the cluster development plan.
Yep.
Which sort of is, is only, it's an elective zone district, so they would have to come to you and ask for that, and the city council, at which point. I mean, so, so there's, there's essentially only one place right now that has a cluster development plan, and that's up around Eagle Eye Golf Club. So houses there would already be subject to this.
Okay.
Any, any new. And nothing, I guess, could be done under this section unless they came to you with a new development asking for this.
Okay.
But that said, it totally does make sense, like, that you might want to have a, a different setback for accessory structures.
Okay, thanks for the background there, that's helpful. For page thirty. With accessory dwelling units, those now under this special use would be limited to just being in the accessory building, so that would eliminate things like above garage ADUs. Which I think are a primary type of ADU.
Yeah, and you know, after our discussion last time too, for this section. And Commissioner, Councilman Meadows made a point that this is changing the rules, and it tends to, this tends to be definitely a policy change and not a correction. Although a professional planner might see it as being a correction. But a, as it is right now, this was written this way, so I, I, I would actually propose that we take this amendment out.
Entirely?
Entirely, and leave it as it is right now, because removing that, that restriction about twenty-five percent of dwelling units, saying in an accessory. Above garages versus just in, in an accessory building.
Yeah.
Those are changes to the policy, those are sort of substantive changes, as modern as it might seem.
So let me ask it this way, if you get rid of the up to twenty-five percent, are they, they're able to make an ADU bigger than twenty-five percent of the structure?
No, what this is saying right now, so that's the maximum use restriction in the section just above that would not change. The special use in this section that is proposed, well, at one point was proposed to change, could be. But it says up to twenty-five percent of the single-family dwelling units. So within this neo-traditional neighborhood development plan, wherever that is, we only have one right now. This is saying, let's say you have a hundred units in that neo-traditional neighborhood redevelopment, only twenty-five of them can ask for a special use approval to have an accessory dwelling unit. And that's it, so this would just be saying, why, why we eliminate that to twenty-five percent of these units, let's let whoever wants to ask for it, ask for it. But that is a substantive change, so we need to be careful.
Okay. Sorry, I don't want to hijack this time too, is there any other comments, is, okay, I'm just gonna do this as quickly as I can, page, page thirty-one. Required parking, parking facilities shall be provided, and then you added in rear yards only, I don't know if that contemplates corner lots. And what would be considered a, you know, rear, there could be a unique situation where that could be. And I, I suppose they could get a special use, right?
That was just based on the, our understanding of the intent of the ordinance when it was written. A corner lot still has a rear yard, we, in East Lansing, we defined the other. I guess I'm used to two fronts for a corner lot, but here we have a front, which is a narrower side, and then the wider, longer side of the corner would be considered. The corner side lot line, so it's still considered side.
Frontages on both sides, right, so what would be the?
You still have frontage, but let's say you have a rectangular parcel, the narrow side is gonna be considered the front. The other side will be considered the corner side, the, the front's on the road. And then the boundary that's opposite the front lot line is the rear. And the other boundary that's opposite the corner side lot line, which you might consider a front, is the side. So you have the front, the rear, the side, and the corner side. So there is still a rear yard and a corner lot, it's just that area behind the house.
Okay. I'll take your report, so I'm trying to, it's late, I'm trying to figure, yeah. The table on, on page thirty-four again, just is the, the building setbacks, those seemed. This is just for RM eight, I think, but. Is it RM eight?
Yeah.
So, again, just, just noting that, those seem very. You know, like, what if, what if you wanted to have, I think RM eight would permit row houses, right? If you have row houses and you wanted to do parking behind them in a separate kind of, I don't know, carport type structure, twenty feet, you couldn't build it within twenty feet of the lot line, really restricts what you could put on the site. Let's see, and I'm almost done, I promise. Page forty-eight, I think you answered this one, but still, I thought it read a little bit weird about alcohol. Is it, yeah, subject to the state of Michigan requirements for local review and approval? I, I guess a question I had is about timing, so is it, that needs to be before, needs to be after, it just says it's subject to it, so is that a prerequisite? Or is it something that we'd have to get later?
That's just intended to move the code as state law changes. So it would automatically then change our ordinance if state law changes. If, right now, essentially, we don't have local authority over alcohol for off-site consumption, but if we did. Then, then we wouldn't need to change this in the future, it's just saying, well, if you do, if you don't, right now, we don't.
Uh, next is page fifty-four for OIP. You know, permitted. Principal uses, so I, I think this is to capture mass timber, assembly of wood products. What, what triggered something for me is we had an applicant a while back that was manufacturing plumbing type supplies, and I don't think they would necessarily fall under this. So I don't know why it's limited to just wood products. Why, wouldn't it say just assembly of. Products from raw material, or something more general? It seems arbitrarily restrictive to just limit this to wood, like, why, why would we make a special carve-out for just wood and not something else?
That was a recommendation of the Mass Timber Committee.
Okay.
So I think that's why they were saying, let's carve it out, because we want to see mass timber production.
It's a good recommendation, but like, why limit it, I understand.
And I think that it would be certainly, for what it's worth, I think it's worth taking a hard look at all of these uses. Uh, and whether or not they should be permitted, whether they should require special use approval. But that kind of look and that kind of potentially fairly substantive change, I think should be a separate process. This was just, this was reflecting what was approved already from the Mass Timber ordinance that was changed last year. So I, I hear you, I agree with you, I think that this, this round may not be the place to change how manufacturing is permitted in the OIP district.
Larger conversation potentially.
Right now, it's a special use.
And I just have two more quick ones, these are both very, on page fifty-seven, an address was added here, I think this is an overlay. District.
Yeah.
Now, it's.
It is, so that's the overlay district that I mentioned had a.
Just an omission, and you're.
It was an omission, and we're introducing that back in.
That's what I know, I just wanted to make sure.
So if you look at the map right now, there's a hole in the overlay, and you're like, what's that from? Did they get a carve-out somehow? No, it was an error, so this is a corrected error.
And then I, I think this just might be an error, but on page sixty-one, transparency is crossed out, but it's in blue font, and I didn't see that in the key. That I was like, hyper-focused on. I said, blue was like a, a hyperlink.
Oh, interesting.
It was red and green.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's one that we missed, I think we had multiple people doing their redline versions, and that was somebody's color. And we went through and changed all the colors to be consistent and missed that one. So that's intended to be moved. Uh, that was, that was moved up to the definition section.
And that's all I have, I swear, I apologize, thank you for humoring me.
These are, these are great comments.
I'm so glad we don't have to vote on this tonight.
It is, so we'll make these, we'll incorporate these changes, bring it back for you next time with the city attorney here. And can also make, could vote next time if you want, well, no, excuse me, it will be, we can have the public here next time, unless you feel like these warrant more discussion before a public hearing.
So I think it'd be helpful to have the public hearing next time, so we could bring in some other people, maybe to weigh in on, on some of this stuff, perhaps some developers, or people from other boards, whoever could come forward. But I think, make those tweaks, that should be the product that comes to forward public hearing, but I'm open to what my commissioners want to do there, I think that's a good way to move the ball forward on it. I think it's gonna require, yeah, another two hearings, maybe get public feedback on it. Um, and then vote on it hopefully at the subsequent hearing, although we don't have to now, because we changed the bylaws, we could vote on it three meetings later. Any other comments or questions on this, or directions?
Mr. Chatham?
Or, over B, sorry.
I want to thank Landon and his staff for a lot of work and a lot of investigation, and, and we, while we do have some questions. I want to recognize that work and thank you, you're advancing this cause and, and I'm grateful for it.
I appreciate that, thank you, I'll, I'll be bringing a lot more your way, I promise.
See, everybody steals a good compliment, I should have said this as I was reading it, I'm like, this is so much work that they put into this, and I'm, yeah, anyways.
So I agree with you in terms of. A public hearing next time, there's a lot of, very cumbersome, lots of work, and I think a public hearing, then a vote would be great. That said, I'm not gonna be here next week, so I had a couple of things I just wanted to add from a sort of a macro perspective. Not, you know, as you did, a very thorough job at a, at a, at a real key level. So really, as I read this, I was, you know, jotting down a couple of macro notes, I'll call them. I, I say this in the spirit of wanting to set you up for success, and your department up for success. Is there anything here that would lead a developer to say, you've made it more complicated for us, we're gonna have to pull more permits? We're gonna have more money to spend on permits, and in turn, assessed value as I mentioned last night? Is someone gonna look at, at the new document and criticize the city, criticize your department for the changes you've made? I don't know if you know the answer to that right now, but I.
I do.
Okay? Okay, good, beautiful, I love it.
These are the new corrections, so if there is that that comes up, I would say we've, we, we should, we should remove that from this right now. And that's where I have a little bit of hesitation with some of these, because they start to stray into policy changes, which we don't want to do. If, if something affects a process, then, then it's not just a clarification.
We're ready for that question when it comes, because I think it might come.
Given the, you know, the significant amount of, I, I want the, you know, our green code committee, in the language here, to fit like a, a puzzle. And I assume it will, okay? Even though our green language is still under review. Okay, all right, okay.
And I think that the outcome, the recommendations of the Green Code Study Committee will be quite substantive, and we'll, we'll start changing our policies.
Okay.
These aren't meant to do that.
All right, that sounds good, and then my final thing, I made some, mentioned something about family, and you know, I, I, there's a lot of language in here about family, so. Inclusive versus exclusive, versus exclusive is my orientation, the final thing is oversight capacity. Have we created anything here in this new document that creates additional oversight for our redo staff? Or does this fine-tune the necessity of good oversight? That's a question that I think might come up, so.
I, I think that this is intended to make it easier to administer.
Okay, beautiful.
And make it easier to understand.
Okay. That's my input, okay.
All right, good input. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll see this soon at a, at a public hearing. All right, so I think that takes us on to. I seem excited about it. Takes us on to item number eight point one, new business, a request to extend the approval of a special use at twenty-one ten Merritt Road. Which will expire in March if not extended.
Uh, yes, as you know, the, the planning commission in late twenty-twenty-three approved a car wash facility at twenty-one ten Merritt, and that was approved by council on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Special uses like this become effective on the date of their recording, local register of deeds, and that made this effective on March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Special uses are valid for, or approvals are valid for twelve months without any action, but if there is no action, as, as in the use is not established or under construction. Uh, we might even look at, is there some sort of progress? But if there's not, then the special use approval expires after one year, which would expire on March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. So the applicant, there, there is a mechanism to allow for a twelve-month extension. The applicant has requested that extension, the planning commission may authorize one extension. The planning commission may authorize one extension for up to twelve months without a public hearing. They've, they're asking for that tonight. They're out of, out of the state, so weren't able to make it this evening, but have the letter in your packet, and then you can see the original, um, special use permit memo that's also in the packet.
Yeah.
So, any questions about this request?
Any questions? Commissioner Nalt?
Landon, do you have any insight into the ongoing legal matters with the property seller that is mentioned?
I'm aware that there are issues beyond that. I can't really speak to those.
Okay. Do you have confidence, so, can you not speak to them because you're not allowed to or you just don't have knowledge?
A little bit of both.
The answer is yes.
More lack of knowledge.
Okay. Um, I, 'cause I think my follow-up question was, since we only get a chance to offer them one extension, do you, do you have confidence that they will be able to resolve ongoing legal matters in a year? Okay.
That's speculation. I don't know.
Okay.
I'd like to. Um, you know, and we have, we have, we do have cases. I haven't seen them yet here in, in my position in East Lansing. I haven't been here long enough, but in previous positions, we see this where people come back and say, yep, I've, I'm past my extension times.
Okay.
I'm coming back with a new application, but nothing's changed since last time.
Oh.